Okay, welcome everyone to the May 5th City Council meeting. This is our special study session, special meeting. Can we have the roll call, please? Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Seeks? He's not online yet. Councilmember Willie?
No, he raised his hand. He just did it visually.
Oh.
Can you not see me?
Oh, I can't, I couldn't see, yes. Yes, okay. Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Hello, and I'm here.
Mayor Sharf?
Here. Okay, so the first item and the only item on the special meeting, study session on small cell facilities within the public right of way. May we have the staff presentation, please?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Mosley, and I'm here to provide information on the city's permitting process and how it compares with neighboring cities. We gather input from you. Give me one second. Let me try and share my screen here. And do you see that? Do you see the, the screen there?
There you go.
Very good.
We see your notes too, though, Chad.
Now, why is it doing that?
Yeah, you need to turn the notes off and maximize.
Give me a second here. Give me a second. All right. Share again. Here. And we'll do this. Is that better?
No, we just see your smiling face.
Okay. And share that.
There we go.
There you go.
There you go. Sorry about that. Again, I'm here to provide inputs or information in the city's permitting process for small cells and how it compares with neighboring cities. Gather input from you. For clarity's sake, this is not a discussion about macro towers like the tree tower at City Hall, but small cell facilities on city streetlight poles. Small cells are wireless antenna characterized by their smaller size, lower power output, and reduced coverage area relative to a standard macro cell tower. Again, today, we're talking about small cells within Cupertino that are, at this time, located on city-owned streetlight poles. Further, it should be noted that utility companies have been provided the right by the California Public Utilities Commission to utilize the public right-of-way in order to provide utility services. Wireless providers fall within the purview of these rights. And what the city has done with permitting the use of city-owned streetlights for these facilities is to work toward limiting the proliferation of new poles to serve these facilities. Federal laws and regulations govern the permitting and placement of cellular facilities, including small cells. A few of these, a few of these federal rules include that, under federal law, a city cannot deny a wireless permit application based on concerns over the health effects of radio frequency emissions, as long as the facility operates within FCC radio frequency limits. Local governments are also prevented from establishing regulations that basically, or regulations that basically prohibit cities from, from, or I should say, basically cause cities from prohibiting the installation of these facilities. This includes creating rules or guidelines that make installation of facility in a certain geographic area impossible. Cities are also required to review and make a determination on small cell applications in a relatively short amount of time, sixty to ninety days, depending on the type of application. Staff has established a process that meets the enacted time limits and that provides for a safety assessment of the equipment installed and reviewed, and review of preliminary drawings, notification of nearby residents, and time to review final construction drawings. This process is relatively efficient, but leaves little time for additional processing or outreach. The city has set reasonable guidelines for wireless providers to follow for permitting of small cell facilities. Each proposed location is reviewed and nearby residents are notified. A post-construction testing policy has been established to ensure facilities are compliant with the FCC radio frequency limits. Additionally, we've provided an opportunity for nearby residents to request that testing be done within and around their residence if desired. We've established a design for small cells that is unobtrusive and will permit a homogeneous and consistent look throughout the city, ensuring that these facilities are consistent from location to location or between different providers. The city's process for permitting application consists of five basic stages. The first stage involves an initial assessment of a location to ensure that the pole is available and appropriate for the proposed equipment. If the location is deemed available and appropriate, the city requests that the applicant prepare information for their initial submittal. The second stage, the initial submittal, involves the applicant submitting to the city conceptual drawings, including a vicinity map, a photo of the pole, and photo sims of the proposed equipment. The city reviews this information for compliance with the city's guidelines for location concerns and for aesthetic qualities and features of the equipment. Once the submittal is accepted, the city then directs the applicant to begin the notification process. Notification involves the applicant mailing letters to all property owners located within a three-hundred-foot radius of the proposed facility location. Property owners are provided fourteen days to review and respond to the notification. A representative from the applicant's team is available to receive and answer any questions from interested parties. Once the notification period has ended, the applicant forwards to the city a list of all inquiries received, including the topic of interest and the individual's name and contact information, if it's provided. It should be noted that, though Cupertino has established a fourteen-day notification period, in practice, the city accepts and reviews all correspondence regarding small cell facilities, even after the notification period has expired. The city reviews all inquiries and concerns and works to address any issues it can. Again, it should be noted that the city cannot deny a wireless project due to concerns over radio frequency emissions from a facility as long as those emissions meet the FCC emission standards. After the notification period has ended, any modification due to the notification process have been rectified. The city has the applicant submit final construction drawings for permitting. Once the submittal is approved, the city issues permits for construction. In the final stage of the process comes when construction is completed. The city requires that the applicant submit as-built drawings of the facility if there were any modifications that occurred during construction. And the city requires that the applicant perform post-construction testing. The post-construction testing policy has been established to ensure facilities are compliant with the FCC radio frequency limits. Additionally, we've provided an opportunity for nearby residents to request that testing be done within and around their desire. Once the testing has been performed and the results have verified that the facility is operating within the approved limits, the permit is closed out. And for reference, most nearby jurisdictions follow very similar permitting processes. In the past, there have been concerns that the city's public notification process did not cover enough area and that the time to respond was too short. The list provided here compares Cupertino's requirements with those of other nearby cities. As can be seen, the requirements are fairly consistent across the various cities with the notification area ranging from a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius up to six-hundred-foot radius from a proposed facility. Most of the cities, including Cupertino, have established a three-hundred-foot notification radius. The notification period is also fairly consistent, ranging from seven days in the low end up to twenty days at the upper end. Cupertino has established a fourteen-day notification period, though, in practice, we've reviewed all correspondence from residents regarding small cell, small cell facilities, even after the notification period has ended. The city also provides relevant information online regarding small cell permits. By navigating to the webpage listed at the bottom of this image, residents can sign up to be notified by email of all small cell permitting efforts occurring within the city. There is also a link that will take you to a GIS map that shows the location of all proposed permitted and active small cell antenna within the city. There is also an FAQ and the city's permitting guidelines and a depiction of the approved designs for small cell facilities on city-owned streetlight poles. The city keeps the information in both the map, as well as on the webpage, up to date, and additional information will be provided in the future that further enhances understanding and clarity. Again, with the email notification, if there is a small cell application that's on the opposite side of the city, if you're signed up for this, you'll still be notified of that. There are some notable, notable differences between Cupertino's guidelines and a couple of the other jurisdictions nearby. For one, Palo Alto requires in-person submittals for all wireless applications. This process is contrary to the city's electronic permitting process, and therefore, the city has not required this. It should be noted that Saratoga requires that the applicant meet with each adjacent property owner prior to completing the notification period. And both Palo Alto and Los Altos require that public meetings be held for all wireless applications. Both Palo Alto and Los Altos require that the pole being proposed to receive a small cell, small cell facility be posted with a notification sign during the notification comment period. Some cities have restricted the spacing between small cell facilities. Los Gatos requires that these facilities be located five-hundred feet, five-hundred feet apart from any other small cell facilities, while Palo Alto has established a six-hundred-foot separation policy. Small cells cannot specifically be prohibited from certain neighborhoods or regions within the city as established by federal law. Therefore, Palo Alto requires that an exception be requested for small cell facilities within residential zones or within six-hundred feet of a school. Any permit that requires an exception is automatically subject to an appeal that would be presented to city council. Palo Alto has also established a setback requirement of twenty feet from any occupied structure. Los Gatos requires facilities be set back fifty feet from residences. Los Gatos has firmly established that all wireless facilities be set back one-hundred feet from the school, and Palo Alto requires an exception be requested for any facility closer than six-hundred feet from the school, but in no case will they issue a permit for anything closer than three-hundred feet from the school. It should be noted that there is some concern as to whether these setbacks establish an effective prohibition as defined by federal law. Staff has reviewed the city's existing small cell requirements to evaluate where there may be areas for further clarification for applicants and where additional design or placement guidelines or requirements could be developed. The items considered include supplementing the city's existing aesthetic and technical standards for small cells to ensure changes in technology and the varying equipment used by different providers can be properly accommodated; creating a small cell application checklist to further clarify submittal requirements and materials; creating a formal submittal review checklist to aid staff in further streamlining their review process; provide clarification on spacing guidelines for small cell facilities owned by a specific provider. Any modifications would work to ensure a fair playing field for providers and would limit one carrier from making a land grab for all streetlight poles in a certain area, thus restricting other providers from placing facilities in the area, trying to limit some certain provider monopolizing a certain portion of the city. This, this, this policy would be to limit the installation of new vertical infrastructure, thus preserving as much as reasonably possible the existing aesthetic quality of a street. Further technical and legal review would be required before implementing this strategy, though. Staff could also provide clarity that the master license agreement permits installation of small cell facilities within the public right-of-way only and does not cover installations within public utility easements located on private property. The city's master license agreements with wireless carriers only permit within the public right-of-way on city streetlight poles. We could require that any streetlight proposed to receive a small cell facility be posted with a notification sign during the notification process. Could work to limit small cells and any poles located within twenty feet of an existing residence to ensure aesthetic qualities are met and to minimize visual impacts from residential windows; establish a minimum vertical clearance for antenna at twenty-six feet above surrounding terrain; and establish a maximum vertical elevation for antenna at thirty-six feet above ground level in residential areas and forty-one feet in commercial areas. These minimum and maximum ranges would simply provide for consistency with the city's existing streetlight pole heights. Could also consider implementing a time and materials fee structure for small cell permitting to ensure staffing costs are being fully recovered by the city. Prior to making any of these modifications, staff would work to ensure that the policies and procedures are compliant with both federal and state mandates. And that concludes the presentation. And staff is here to take any questions or input from you that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam City Clerk, do we have members of the public that would like to comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Karen Toto waiting to speak. I will allow them to talk.
Okay, so, welcome. You have three minutes from when you start talking.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for this opportunity to express our concern regarding the Verizon small cell installation on light pole. I'm Shweta, a physician, and my husband, Kiran, is with me here. The proposed installation at ten ninety-nine November is right in our side yard. Verizon sent a letter that light pole is sixty feet from our house. They measured it via Google Map, but we measured it's fifty-five feet. But most importantly, it is within twenty feet of our backyard and pool, where our young kids, eight- and ten-year-olds, spend most of their time. Also, the pole is in the line of sight from all kid playrooms and bedrooms, and the light is already disturbing their sleep, so we already have complaints about the light pole. And as the safety of IG is still under research and lot of facts yet to be known, especially the long-term effects on young kids, we are seriously concerned about the safety of the small cell radiation effect on young kids, especially with a kid with a developmental disorder. I urge the city to seriously consider our request and ensure our safety. We do not want it next to our house. Even better, we request the city to lower the height of the pole or remove it altogether. We had two incidents of theft in the last six months, and we believe it is due to this light that our privacy is breached. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Kirsten, who's next?
It appears to be it, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, there's no, I see Alex. Alex, the UP has raised, raised his hand. Do you see that, Kirsten, and participants?
I will allow him to talk.
Great, okay, welcome, Alex.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Hopefully, you can hear me. Okay, good, good. I'm, I am with Verizon. I handle local government relations in the Bay Area and Oregon for Verizon. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the council, even in these, you know, unusual circumstances. This is, I think, my first Zoom city council meeting, so thank for the opportunity to participate, even virtually. And I think that gets, that gets me to my first point is, I think, these circumstances we're living under right now and the last month and a half, two months, I, I think it's shown how critical wireless and wired networks are to maintaining connectivity for work socially among families. And frankly, we need to, we've seen a huge explosion of, of, of growth on our networks during this time, and we don't anticipate that to, to lessen. We, even before this, this crisis began, on average, we saw each household having twelve to thirteen connected devices in their home, on their person, all connected to the internet. Bandwidth use is increasing dramatically. I just looked at our, our quarterly, you know, corporate statements, and, and in there, they have a graph that shows network usage and network capacity over the last year. And if you look at our network usage now, and then you go back and look at the capacity a year ago today, there is literally no headroom. Had we not been building as fast as we can, investing seventeen to eighteen billion dollars in our network every single year, our net, our networks would melt down with the growing traffic. And we see a huge growth in especially voice, but also data during this time. And I think that we need to keep these networks going. We don't know how long this crisis will last. I don't know if my young children are going back to school in the fall. I'm doing distance learning with them now. And I'm so thankful that we have these networks, and we need to keep building them and make them better and more resilient. And, and, you know, I, I think that, that the city Cupertino has been, we've been working a, a long time with Chad and others in the city, and, and we're really appreciative of the work, and we want to keep doing it. And so I would just urge you, as you move forward, there are a lot of cities, as, as the presentation showed, doing a lot of different things. Some of them are not doing the right thing, frankly. And, and, you know, I'll, I'll reference the letter that Paul Albritton, our council, submitted. Some of those cities are, are on the road to, to litigation, frankly, because they are in violation of the federal orders. And, you know, now, I think, in this time, I think that, that those governments can ill afford costs associated with costly litigation that they'll probably end up losing, unfortunately. So there are good models out there. And, and so I would urge, as, as you move forward with your policy, you know, of, of, you know, making the best infrastructure, you know, that Cupertino residents can possibly have, whether it's, you know, telecom, a road, any kind of infrastructure, that, that you look at the models that have worked for other communities. I'd invite you to, to talk with San Jose. They're really a leader in the area on, on 5G and have partnered with both us and AT&amp;T to, to, to build the next generation of networks. Please look at those good models, and, and I'd urge you to follow those. And, and again, we're, we're here to be good partners with the community, and we're happy to answer any questions. And when it comes to issues of residents and concerns about aesthetics and placement, we, we want to work with residents wherever possible, wherever it's feasible, to find alternatives. I don't want to get into the health thing. I think that, that, you know, this time, I think, has really shown we need to, we need to rely on facts and science and data. You know, we don't need to rely on superstition and conspiracy theories anymore. And I think it's, it's going to take us down the wrong path. And, you know, I'll just close with, again, I really appreciate the, the work we've been able to do with the city, and I look forward to, you know, continuing a productive relationship. Happy, of course, to answer any question. Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure we'll have questions, or yous, don't go away. Kirsten, was there anyone else?
Yes, Jennifer Griffin. I just want to quickly remind anyone who's attending and wishes to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Any callers may press star nine, and I will allow Jennifer to talk right now.
Okay.
Can I ask some question now for the speaker?
Um, yeah, all right, you can ask.
Okay, because I want to clarify. I have kids at home. I don't think they do their homework on their cellphone. And we are talking about small cell, right? These do not provide Wi-Fi. I think kids, my kids use less cellphone right now because they are at home, and they have Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi available. So, so I'm confused. Are we talking about small cell, right? That only supports data. Actually, it's to expand data capacity for cell phones. So if someone doesn't use a lot of data, they really don't benefit from these small cells. Please, can you please clarify?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you. So, so first, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, the electromagnetic spectrum here. Wi-Fi signals, whether, you know, are the same thing as, they're all on the spectrum, electromagnetic spectrum, just as 5G signals are. With, with regard to 5G small cells, certainly, for, for those, they, they do not connect right now. We do not have a Comcast-style product. I will tell you that what we, what, what 5G, what small cells will enable actually is a new product, a new home, a small business product to compete with, you know, the Comcast's and the DirecTVs of the world. And, but instead of getting a line of fiber run to your house, either aerially or underground, or having a satellite dish placed in your house and have wires run through your house to a, some sort of set-top box, you would simply sign up for our service, and you, we would send you a box that would receive that signal wirelessly from the nearest small cell and then propagate a Wi-Fi signal throughout your house. So, actually, we are laying the groundwork for a, a third option or a fourth option for consumers and for residents to actually get that Wi-Fi. And secondly, not everyone has a Wi-Fi network at home. You know, I, I realize that, that Cupertino is a wealthy, a wealthier suburb of the valley. I, I grew up in the South Bay. I'm familiar with the area. In fact, my first job was over at, at Siemens Microelectronics near where the, the new Apple headquarters is. But, you know, so, so we, not everybody relies, can, can rely on a Wi-Fi network.
It's their choice. I think fiber optic network probably is still a better way to deliver. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think the key thing is that this is, you know, I have two fibers in my backyard, one from Comcast, one from AT&amp;T. This is like a wireless fiber third option. But I would think that most people right now are using AT&amp;T or Comcast fiber because there is no 5G in this area. Okay, Jennifer, welcome.
Hello. Hello, yeah, we've got Comcast, AT&amp;T, and Verizon, so. Anyway, yes, I'm glad that you all are having this discussion. Actually, I just got the video up a few minutes ago because I couldn't get the video part up, my computer, who knows why. But anyway, I just wanted to ask, why, because I didn't see some of the charts earlier, why did Cupertino decide to just go with fourteen days of response time from neighbors when I think Chad said that some of the cities had up to twenty? I would think that with this type of setup going into neighborhoods, having more time for people to respond would probably be a better route so that everyone could understand what's going on. There's a lot of homes that are rentals, so they may not get the notifications. The notifications may be going to the property owners, and the property owners may not live on-site. They, they might live in the city, and then you have renters there that are in the homes. And also, I think for three hundred feet, we should probably push that out to five hundred. We have lots of different-sized neighborhoods. We have neighborhoods with small lots, neighborhoods with big lots. And this is something, when it comes to situations concerning cancer, we need to have a lot, I mean, I lost a brother to cancer five years ago. You know, everyone has issues in their families, but you want to know when that is something that's coming into your neighborhood. And I think by having a robust discussion, we're going to get a better result. And yes, I understand we're going through a pandemic. We need to have access as much as we can. We've got, I've got power programmer neighbors from Apple that are working at home and, you know, every day. And, and I mean, we need the bandwidth, et cetera. But therefore, though, this is the first time that we're not just having these cell towers in isolated areas on high poles. We're coming into neighborhoods, and we need to be sensitive to about that. And I understand that completely. I have a great, I have a lot of knowledge about AT&amp;T because I have family members that have worked for AT&amp;T. So I'm, I'm very sympathetic to everyone, but we just need to make sure that we're rolling this out and that everybody understands what's going on.
Fifteen seconds. Are you done?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So Chad, can you comment to Jennifer's question of where the fourteen days came from?
When small cells were first kind of introduced into the South Bay, a number of cities in the, in the area got together to, to discuss, you know, what, you know, what were these? A lot of, a lot of us didn't even really understand what they were requesting. During that process, I think we had Cupertino, Campbell, Los Gatos was there, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, Santa Clara, San Jose, Fremont, Hayward, I mean, a number of cities. And, you know, we had talked about, you know, the shot clocks that were implemented and permitting process, and kind of established a timeline for the notification period. And we basically wanted to notify the neighbors of this. We had established a timeline for the notification that would fit within the shot clock and provide adequate time for us to permit these facilities. We felt that two weeks was reasonable. You know, people have diverged over the last couple of years as, as they've actually initiated implementation, and some have, have decided that seven days is adequate. Some have requested twenty. I mean, we're right in the middle of that range, and there are a number of other cities that have chosen fourteen also. I wouldn't say it was an arbitrary number to choose. It was one that we felt was reasonable to get the notification process out and give people time to respond. As that indicated in my presentation, though, you know, even after the fourteen days, we continue to get people who are interested in these. And I've had people say, you know, we were on vacation for three weeks. We're back, we just got this. You know, we didn't have a chance to provide input, and at that point in time, we indicate we're still listening. And at that point in time, we indicate we're still listening. Let us know what your input is and we'll do what we can to address it.
So how many days after the fourteen days before the shot clock expires?
Uh, typically, so. Typically looking at, depending on the type of installation, thirty to sixty days.
Mm hmm.
With that, we still have to go through uh the design process. Um. To make sure that the the facility is compliant with, you know, all the structural and electrical requirements that are necessary.
Right, so if it was sixty days. We we might be able to extend, if the shot clock was sixty days, we might be able to. Extend it from fourteen to twenty one, but if it's only thirty days, then. Then that would only leave nine days afterwards.
So the shot clock is typically sixty days or ninety days, depending on the type of installation. There is uh some time before the notification process goes out. There's uh kind of an initial assessment, which is typically ten days. And then there's an initial review, which is. You know, between ten to twenty days and that's where the first thirty days goes. And then um we do the notification a couple of weeks and then we're down to a very short time period. Um. We've typically been um there, most of these installation are new installation, so it's it's typically a ninety day turnaround. So we have a little bit of time after that, but there is a lot of technical information that needs to be reviewed for these. Have gotten better at stream those review processes. And maybe at this point, could facilitate an extra, you know, an extra six days, make it twenty days. Because we have, we have gotten better at it. When we first.
Would that, would that hurt if we went um, if we went from two weeks to three weeks? I mean, would that make it impossible for me?
It it just makes it harder and any kind of modification that that um. That requires us to review things on a faster basis could uh require additional staffing resources. I mean, at this point in time. Uh, we have myself working on these and part of a part time person. Um, so we have somewhere around a third to a half of a full time employee.
Okay.
Um, for reference, San Jose has about forty full time employees or somewhere around there. I think Palo Alto has has at least seven, if not more, people working on these. There are. You know, people have put a lot of resources in these and we've created a process that's very efficient. Fits within the shot clock period and and keeps our staffing resources at a minimum.
All right, thank you. Council member Chow, I see you have your hand raised.
The key is uh the ten day appeal period, right? With the fourteen, whether the fourteen day or twenty, the twenty one day, would that? When does the ten day um period clock start counting?
Guess I'm not sure.
In case someone wants to appeal a decision within that sixty day window. Where does that ten day um period fit in just? I mean, in case a uh property owner maybe didn't receive it within the fourteen days. I assume the approval doesn't happen right at the fourteen days. It happens a few days uh later, right?
Correct, the actual.
You have time to appeal.
Correct, the actual, I think the appeal process would actually happen after a permit is issued. And a permit has to be issued within the shot clock time period and we're usually pushing that shot clock um. To the end. I mean, we're, we have a tight schedule. So once that permit's issued, that's when the appeal uh would start.
Mm hmm, yeah, that's okay. So do we start asking question now or?
I was gonna ask if the public hearing was over.
Yeah. Should, are there more? Okay, I'll wait.
There, there is, the person that has their hand raised has already spoken, just to clarify uh to Kiran Toda. Once you've, once you've spoken, you may only speak once during um the public comment period. And that is all I I see for public comments.
Could I make one comment? You know, I think it's important that the residents know. Truly what the logistics are. So so she has spoken, but if her husband wanted to speak, he's allowed to speak.
Correct.
See, I think we need to be sure we let them know that.
So, Mr. Mayor, would you, would you like me to allow them to speak? Um, it's the same guest. You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Right, if the spouse wishes to speak, even though they only called in once together, that that that's fine.
Okay, I will allow them to talk.
Okay, welcome. Who is speaking?
Hi, this is Kiran. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak. Uh. So, you know, we are not against the technology uh that, and we are actually one of the uh like, you know, leading adopters of technology. We do uh embrace technology. It's all good. The thing is, uh, some of the. Things that were actually cited in the uh letter that was sent to us were itself are not accurate. And given that the kits will be within twenty feet. Right, and that's what actually already violates the city rules, which was actually presented by the engineer. Uh, sorry, I I don't recall his name. He said that within twenty feet, we are not going to install. So and this is within twenty feet and that's exactly what our concern is. If it is hundred feet away, I have no problem whatsoever. In fact, I even sent an email to the city. Uh, like a few people, including to the Modus LLC, who our uh email email address was there. So showing that, you know, there is another pole further away, which is further away, like, you know, in fact, I did the groundwork for them. Because all the research was based on Google Maps, right? So uh while I live in this neighborhood and I can tell which one probably is further away from this and even pointed them to that. Saying that there is one uh that is further away from all of these and that's not uh more than two hundred feet away from this location. So if Verizon really wants to consider all these, uh, they should. And I would uh request the city to actually encourage them to look at uh uh other look, other places too. Because uh, as my wife was mentioning, we already had problems with this poll. Uh, as we had two incidents of theft in the last six months and the city has not made anything. To take care of our concerns because both the times, the sheriff was involved, but then uh nothing was, nothing really happened. It was, we had to take the intervention. So Cupertino is becoming a safer neighborhood for the residents. Uh, it is for the council members and the mayor to actually show it to us that, you know, thus we are working towards making it safe. We we believe that light is the reason our house was not safe and our neighbors share the same concern. So I thought I might al- also bring it to your attention. Uh, that.
Okay, so you say in the streetlight pole is within twenty feet of your house?
Yeah, in fact, it's uh, it's actually right on my lot itself. If you, I even sent that to the city thing. Uh, it is within uh eighteen to twenty feet within a, like in off a backyard, right there. Sideyard. So that's where the kids play all the time.
Oh, okay, because, oh, you're on a corner lot.
Yeah, I'm in the corner lot.
Oh, okay, so this is on the perpendicular street and it's within twenty feet of your house.
Yeah. In fact, that one is on my lot itself. If you look at the city diagrams itself, the dot for the light city pole is actually within my. Uh, whatever the shape for the lot is. And that's what I shared with the uh uh email address of whatever was in the letter, saying that, hey, this is within mine. So obviously you are not really putting it adjacent, right? It's right there.
Okay, so, um, all right, thank you. Um, so Chad, do we have a number of feet that it has to be away from someone's house?
Um, at this point in time, Cupertino does not have a restriction um as to how far away from a residence or a structure uh that it needs to be. Um, I'm not sure, um, I I think Mr. Thoda may be thinking of the wrong pole. Um, there are two streetlight poles that are kind of close to his property furniture. Um, the one that's more easterly. Is located uh per our dimensions from our our property information, sixty feet from the the house. It is uh about twenty five feet from the deck of his pool area. Um, but the one that we're looking at is sixty feet from the structure. Um, additionally, that pole is located in the public right of way. Um, there is a GIS point that indicates it may be in the property. But when you're looking at maps and the aerial, it's located within city property.
Okay, so one thing I wasn't clear on is generally people want streetlights to prevent. Break-ins, they want more light. So what is the logic that a streetlight would cause more break-ins? I'm not sure I get that.
So uh, am I speaking? Yes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, you can.
So actually, we, our lot, I don't know if you see from the satellite view. Ours has the widest surface area towards the street. I actually, my property alone has two streetlights on it. One on uh, I don't know, east or west in this direction, but on both sides of my lot, I have two uh streetlights. So both the sirens, I've seen people come from one side and plan their tag, whatever that is, right? And then exit from the other side too. So no matter how many kind of precautions I take, it is incredibly hard for me to protect. The only way is for them to not plan or make the other side dark. So we deliberately keep all our lights dark on the other side so that people just don't come from one side and exit from the other side. But this little, this light actually made it uh like, you know, not within our control. In fact, in the first incident of theft, we have a trail of them exiting from our backyard into that uh uh. The protected region, I believe that's called, uh, behind my lot.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so Chad, you said the pole is twenty five feet from the pool deck, right?
Yeah, based on our property information, uh aerial, it's about twenty five feet from the the pool deck.
So when you say about, can you have an exact thing? Because in your slide, you said twenty feet uh is the restriction. But uh, when I looked at the same map, I I can't really measure because aerially I can't measure.
Um, again, we're using uh Cupertino's property information GIS map. It is available online. It's a web based map. There are measuring uh functions within there and the aerial provided is fairly accurate. Uh, we're looking at about twenty five feet to the pool deck. Uh, but again, we have not established restrictions uh for setbacks from structures at this point in time. It's something that we may consider, but we need to ensure that we are um not. Creating an effective prohibition uh as established by the FCC.
Right, so so Chad, other cities that have these um. Distance requirements, have they been challenged legally or is it okay to to have that distance?
So I I'm not the professional here when it comes to this. I know respect to Los Altos, which has established certain setback requirements. That they are being challenged by both Verizon and AT and T. There are certain aspects of setbacks that have been um established by Palo Alto that I have heard indication may not be. Uh, legally defensible, um, but. I don't, I have not, I don't, I've not seen any litigation against them and I'm not necessarily uh the best person to be. About uh, about that.
All right, thank you.
Um, what is the pro, the pole from the property line?
The the setback from the property line?
Yeah.
Probably about three to four feet.
Only three to four feet?
Correct.
Because I think the property owner does have the right to add any home addition on their property. Up to, I think, four feet from the their property line. So installing um antenna four feet from their property line. Actually prevents them from adding any new home addition to story or maybe ADUs. So we are talking about property right. And you, uh, I think right now there, they are measuring it, saying that, oh, it's sixty feet from the closest window. Existing window, but the property owner does have a right to add any addition to their property. And the existing ADU laws allow them to add ADU up to four feet from property line. So that means I think we need to major our exposure from potential future buildings. In that property line so that we don't invade, we don't um. We don't invade in their property line because they do have the right to add structure later.
And I can provide some clarity here. Um, the property line that we're talking about um is actually a front property line. So the setback would be twenty feet. It's it's a, it's a triangular shaped lots and the this is located in the front. Um, additionally, there are no federal requirements that state um. That uh antennas need to be set back from structures. And then finally, based on all of the EMF reports that we've. Seve for small cells constructed within Cupertino, once you're one foot from the antenna face, you are below the FCC limits. This is one foot from the antenna up thirty feet in the air. One foot away, you're below the limits. These things are typically operating um hundred times or more below the FCC limits.
Yeah, I understand the the FCC limit is measured by. How the 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 level when tissue would heat up. It doesn't measure the actual biological impact on tissue, human tissue. And that's actually commented by the Environmental Protection Agency. That if the current FCC standard established in nineteen ninety six. Only measures the impact when tissue starts heating up. So a lot of impacts are not really measured according to the current standard, unfortunately.
My my understanding was uh there was a detectable limit where skin could detect the heat. And then FCC established their limit at a hundred times below that level. That's my understanding of the situation.
Okay. Um, all right, thank you, Chad. I see Raj have, has a hand raised, is.
Yes, he is our commissioner and we also have a caller, um whichever one.
Okay, yeah, welcome Raj.
Oh, I thought, I mean, I can go later also, but anyway, since you, uh, thanks for the opportunity. Uh, actually, uh, I have a quick question. So I'm sure uh these cells, right, the small cells are deployed for the FCC emission guidelines. Are there mechanisms in place to periodically monitor or audit emissions during the cells operation? Uh, I mean, what is the industry or the government practice that? I mean, I guess these small cell powers can be varied, right? I mean, I'm like, is it like install once and and once they are installed with FCC um compliant? Uh, are they just, they are just operational or are there any further uh measurement that is being done? Do you know anything about that?
Um, yeah, Chad or or the um. Horizon person wanna?
Alex is also there.
Alex?
I can provide a little bit of information, but Alex may be able to provide better information. Um. After these are installed, we require uh that they test it to verify that it's within um the FCC limits. If they were to make any uh substantial modifications to the equipment within uh the small cell, we would have them measure again. Um, the city does not have an ongoing testing policy established. Um, I don't believe that the federal government has required one either. Uh, from a practical standpoint, when these small cells are first um installed. There is a number of calculations to ensure that the facility is going to be um working harmoniously with their network. And they don't necessarily want to go in and make adjustments to the power outputs because then they've got to make adjustments all over. Um, maybe Alex can provide further information, but my understanding is once these are in, they don't typically want to touch them because it it. Could potentially create interference for their other uh small cell facilities or other wireless facilities.
Okay, basically the cell diameter, they don't want to alter that.
Okay, that is my understanding.
Okay, Kirsten, who else?
Thank you.
Uh, we have caller one, seven, eight, six, that I will allow to talk.
Okay.
Uh, we have a phone number ending in one, seven, eight, six. Please go ahead and speak.
Wow.
Hello?
Yes.
I have some questions regarding uh um GIS map.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you very much for creating this, you know, nice map. Um, how often this map is updated? Because uh what I see, the map, that was updated uh last August. And according to Chad, last February, uh seven more cell towers were activated. But the map was not updated, so and also GIS map, that GIS map indicate. Which small tower is four G or updated five G. Um, also, um, um. That map also a- attached um activation report. That's very nice. Um, however, all the uh macro cell tower, which is big, large cell tower. Does not attach any activation report that include the. does not attach any activation report that include, uh, uh, macro cell tower in, uh, uh, City Hall parking lot. Um, would you please explain of that? Thank you.
Hey Chad, do you wanna?
I can provide some explanations there. Um, with respect to the updating, we update it as necessary to show information that has changed. Um, I'm not sure where, uh, the, the speaker was getting that it hasn't been updated since August. It was updated August nineteenth of last year, August twenty-sixth of last year, October twenty-fourth of last year, November thirteenth of last year, and April twenty-seventh, uh, just a week ago. It's actually going to be updated again, probably tomorrow or the day after for some, some new facilities. Um, I'm not sure, uh, with respect to the macro towers, um, you know, I've not required, uh, activation reports for those because I not have not necessarily permitted those. I'm permitting small cell facilities. I'm not sure if we have activation reports for some of the older macro towers. Um, the new, uh, macro tower at City Hall, I'm gonna try and get activation reports from the providers. And when we get that information, we will, uh, upload it to this webpage as well. Um, I'm not sure what else, uh, what other questions are over there?
Hey, um, Kirsten, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Mark Grabich and I will allow him to talk.
Okay. Welcome, Mark.
I actually represent AT&amp;T and I thank you for allowing me to speak and for holding this study session. Um, you know, I, right now I'd, I'd like to, uh, help answer some questions and I appreciate, uh, having worked with Chad in developing the current standards and, um, the, the deployments that we've done in Cupertino and, um, holding us responsible for good designs, but also allowing for reasonable standards that are promoting the deployment of small cells, which for more than just Wi-Fi access, what's important to, um, note is that practically seventy-five percent of homes right now in California rely solely on wireless for their home phone service. And so it is vitally important that these small cells are deployed in order to help boost our network performance because the macro facilities are being overwhelmed by the amount of traffic on both voice and data. And most voice calls occur over the data side of the network. So these capacity strained macros can no longer handle the volume of traffic and that's why these small cells need to be deployed in order to offload that capacity from macro and free up, uh, our network to have better and more consistent call quality. I also wanted to, um, introduce Bill Hammett. We have him. He is a third-party engineer that performs, uh, work for both cities and carriers. And he does a lot of our, eh, electromagnetic emissions reports. Um, these small cell facilities in these reports are always performed at the equipment's maximum potential power. And they're assumed to be at that maximum potential power twenty-four, seven. These small cell facilities are low-powered facilities and are usually operating at significantly less than their maximum power. And, um, even at maximum power, they are considerably lower than the FCC standard. In some cases, they're as low as less than one percent and other cases, they might be at two percent or two and a half percent of the FCC's threshold. And that's again, assuming they're operating at maximum power. Um, and typically these are, uh, again, operating at significantly less than that. So when we, um, do actual measurements in the field, we find that our, our actual emissions are much, much lower than what is reported in a application as the, the maximum. With regard to, um, and Chad, I think did a great job answering the question of whether we would increase the power. Again, the power can't go beyond what is presented to the city through the application process. But, um, if, eh, eh, and his point is noted that these are designed to work harmoniously with the existing network and we don't want to, um, create any interference. So part of the reason they're low-powered is that it also helps, um, reduce and minimize interference with the existing network. The other point to note is that if we were to make any changes to the equipment, those would have to be applied for and, um, approved through the city process with a, a new electromagnetic emissions report showing our compliance with the FCC's, um, standard. But, uh, I would, eh, if Bill, if, is Bill, uh, Hammond should be on, if he's allowed to speak, he can answer some of the questions that the city had with regard to the standard and, um, you know, how, what was developed. And even though it was originally adopted in the nineteen nineties, it has been revisited and reaffirmed even as recently as this year. Um, so if there are questions that people have, he is available to answer them.
So I, I had a question about something you said. You said that, um, you know, a certain percentage, seventy-five percent rely on, uh, wireless for their voice. But I mean, that uses very little, very low amount of data. So the existing LTE infrastructure is sufficient for that. And also do these five G cells, do they have any kind of backup power?
Um, so to answer the question, yes, voice calls do not require a lot of data, but it's running on the same network that is al- already constrained by the vast amounts of data consumption that's out there. And that the more people are using their phones for alternate uses that are hogging all of the data that's available, these, you know, that does degrade the call quality that anyone can experience. So that's the vital need for the small cells. Um, with regard to, what was your, uh, second question? I apologize.
Backup power on the small cells. I know the big cells, um, at least AT&amp;Ts and Verizons typically have, um, you know, the, like the one at City Hall has a generator. Um, but the small cells, are they going to have any backup power?
So currently our small cells are not designed to have backup power. Um, you know, part of the reason for that is, I think aesthetically, it, it definitely helps reduce the amount of equipment that are, um, deployed. But also because these, these are mainly geared to offset the macro facilities in the event of an emergency where, um, power is out, the backup power at macro facility. You know, you'd still have your coverage and depending on hopefully people limiting their phone usage to just voice calls, the things that may need to be, to occur during times of emergency would still be handled by the macro, assuming people are using their phones mostly for voice communication or text to let people know that they're okay.
Okay. Also, are you gonna put five G on the macro cells as well?
Uh, you know, eventually our network, eh, again, five G, eh, and there's a lot of misinformation out there about five G. Five G is, is obviously there's equipment that supports, um, five G deployment, but it's more of a technology and a software-based increased, eh, increased ability to more efficiently utilize our spectrum. Five G is just a new, more efficient technology. And it may, it, it can be deployed over the existing spectrum that we have, no different than how two G went to three G and three G went to four G. So, um, I, I can't specifically state what may be planned for macro facilities, but I do know that eventually our network will roll as, um, roll into five G and it will repurpose the existing frequencies that we currently deploy for four G to five G technology.
Great. Thank you. Um, um, all right. Thank you. I see, uh, before I go to, um, Leon, does any of the other council members wish to speak? I don't see anyone else.
We have, we actually have three more people with their hands.
All right, go, go with, uh.
I will allow him to speak. Please go ahead, Mr. Hammett.
Unmute. There we go. I had to unmute myself.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. I manage a firm of twenty. We're located up in Sonoma County. And a regular part of our professional practice is the calculation and the measurement of radio frequency exposure conditions. In my thirty-five years in working in this field, we've done, uh, more than twenty thousand evaluations of, of facilities, radio and TV stations, as well as, uh, uh, wireless facilities like you're talking about tonight, including the small cell. We've done, uh, a number of, uh, the activation reports that Chad described, uh, for you tonight. And we've done a number of those, uh, for, uh, the city of Cupertino. As engineers, we work for carriers and cities and landlords. Our job is very straightforward. What are the exposure levels and how do they compare to the standard? And the summary that you got from Chad was, was correct. So, you know, we're finding everything is a hundred times or more below the FCC limits. So there's no question that these facilities are in compliance. Councilmember, uh, Chow asked about, um, uh, the FCC standard based on heating. Um, in fact, uh, the standard, uh, that, that the FCC had adopted in nineteen ninety-six has been updated several times since then. Uh, there's been no tightening of the standard itself because all the research that's been done in those intervening years has not shown the necessity for tightening the standard. The standard has in it a fifty times safety factor, uh, below the most sensitive measure, which is not heating. It's a, it's a sensitivity. So we, we're in a luxurious situation right now because we've got, uh, a brand new updated IEEE standard, the ICRP standard, International Commission on Non-Ionized Irrigation Protection. That's the European standard, uh, has just been updated. The FCC is updating its rules. Uh, so everybody now has, has, is looking at, at a worldwide set of data and drawing the same conclusions, which is that the, the standards as adopted are fully protective of human health. And as we discussed, everything here is hundreds or thousands of times, uh, lower than that. I'm, I'm happy to address any questions you might have. I just want to make, make that point that it does comply and that it, they are current, uh, scientifically documented standards.
Okay. Thank you. Kirsten, anybody else?
Yes, we have a guest named PR, PR that I will allow to talk.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Pamu. I'm the resident of Cupertino. Uh, thank you, Mayor and the council members. Uh, I just had one question about this small cell towers. Uh, what are the cities have adopted this technology and, uh, how, since, how long has this been adopted in the residential level? Uh, because we may be, we may be thinking, okay, this is a newer technology. We want to adopt it, but only after three, four years, you really, really have scientific studies and you see that there are lawsuits against this technology. So I'm just, I want to know more information about this. So.
Okay. Um, I don't know who's the proper person to answer that.
I can provide some information. I know, uh, it's not necessarily cities adopting this technology. It is cities permitting this technology. Um, I know just currently in the surrounding area, there are ordinances and policies from pretty much all the cities. Cupertino, Campbell, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Los Gatos, Mountain View, Palo Alto, Saratoga, San Jose, Sunnyvale. Keep going. I know they all have ordinances. I'm not sure how many of these cities have actually permitted any installation at this point in time. Um, I know that San Jose has, um, Sunnyvale has, Palo Alto has. Um, I, I couldn't verify if there's any others at this point in time, but I imagine there are other cities that have actually permitted installation these.
Uh, a follow-up question. One of the things that was in the, uh, circular is about five G technology. Uh, when they have to put five G technology on this small cell towers, would there be a separate application process? Or this does support five G? Um, because when I look up one about, uh, the reputation about five G is that it's not all safe. So I'm, I'm wondering if there'd be a separate application process when they really start putting five G on this tower?
And I can again, answer that. Um, the small cells that are currently installed within Cupertino are all four G facilities. Um, if any of the applicants wanted to install five G on those existing facilities, they would need a permit. Um, with that stated, we've recently received some applications for facilities that would carry both four G and five G technology. Um, and for those, there would be no, uh, separate, um, permit required for the five G. It would be incorporated into the four G technology.
Uh, from the city's standpoint, has there been any, eh, like, do you have any consultancy or someone giving you feedback on is five G technology at a stage where you could adopt it? Uh, I'm sorry, give, uh, I forgot the word, give permits on?
Could you repeat that question again? I apologize.
So from the, from the city's standpoint, I, do you have some consultants giving you feedback on whether to, whether the technology is mature enough that you could, uh, start permitting on?
Um, you know, at this point in time, the providers are requesting to install five G antennas on, um, certain poles. And the, the, the providers are required to comply with FCC guidelines with the installation of these facilities. And so if their facilities do comply with those guidelines, then, uh, it's acceptable to go in.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have caller one, seven, eight, six is raising her hand again. I just want to clarify to the caller that you may only speak once under public comment, but if you have another person with you on that end, they can speak. So I will allow you to talk.
Same person, but I.
Hi, do you have another person that is speaking?
I have the same person, but I have more questions.
Oh, no, sorry.
I was.
Um. Okay, um, Kirsten, let's bring it back to the council now. Um, I see Rod has his hand raised and then John and then back to Leon. Welcome, Rod.
Hey, thank you very much. I have a nice traffic background tonight. So as if we were, uh, in two eighty at, uh, rush hour. I, um, I, I have a question for the, the technical, uh, folks. The report that you do, do you do it for every site that we, we've, um, we've permitted so far?
I can respond to that. Um, there are calculations that are done upfront to verify that the, um, calculated limits will be within the FCC limits. And then they actually go out after the, after the facility has been constructed and is operational and they do an activation report where they verify it's operating within those limits.
So for, for the couple that, um, that spoke, public comment and the, uh, the, the folks who were on the email, um, has, what's the status of that facility? Has it been erected?
And this is for the facility at one, zero, nine, nine, November Drive.
For the. The photos, yeah.
Correct. No, that has not been, um, permitted yet. We basically looked at that location. It seemed like a reasonable location. It did not obstruct any sight lines, was reasonably distant from, uh, other uh, structures, um, which is not necessarily a permitting point, but it's something that we look at. And once we state that the location seems acceptable, we allow them to send out a note, the, the, the carriers to send notice to the surrounding neighbors. That's, we're just in the notification period.
So do our calculations reveal how far under the FCC limit the, uh, facility would be when operating?
Uh, I seem to.
At twenty feet, at twenty-five feet, at forty feet?
Uh, we have, we have that information. I seem to recall that at ground level, it's operating at, and this is the, the very conservative calculations that it's operating at like three point two percent of the FCC limits. Um, typically when we get these early calculated EMF reports, um, they're higher than the actual, um, facility, uh, reading.
I'm sorry. So, so I, I missed what fraction of the FCC limit?
Uh, three point two percent if I recall.
Three point two.
Report in front of me. Um, so I, I can't verify that, but I think it was three point two.
Okay, fine. Um, and for the engineer who was, I don't know if he's still on the line. And for the engineer who was, I don't know if he's still on the line, that does the RF exposure things and walks around with an RF meter. How does, how does that kind of a radiation level compare to what somebody receives with a cellphone in his or her pocket? Maybe Mr. Hammett, yes?
Yes, I think I'm unmuted. Good.
Yeah.
Thanks for the question. The handset that people use, the cellphone is typically thousands of times higher specific absorption rate than anything that comes from these facilities. The 3.2% is a conservative number, so, but even there, you're 30 times below the standard, the standard has a 50 time safety factor in it, the safety factor is enormous, whereas you don't have that same safety factor with the telephone because it's considered a localized source of energy. And so the cellphone allows higher levels than anything that comes off of these, these small cells.
And so you're saying, compared to the calculation done on the particular tower of interest to a particular couple in Cupertino, if you compare the power level that the body receives to the device that they have near them, because I'm rather assuming that most everybody in Cupertino has a cellphone these days, and probably multiples in the household, you're saying the power level is a factor of 1,000 or so different?
Yes, the term we're using is specific absorption rate, that's energy absorbed by the body, and that relationship is thousands of times greater for the cellphone than it is for the cell signal coming from the tower.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And I have a question for the legal eagles, maybe our city attorney or others on the call that can answer this. My recollection is, there was a proposal in California, a bill that would have allowed 35 cubic feet of cell equipment to go on any old pole, a PG&E pole, whatever they could, whatever carriers could find. And our city said, no, we don't want to do that, we want something that's not ugly, we want a solution that fits in light poles. So this is how we got to this point. I think recognizing that cities like ours had made progress, you know, my understanding is Governor Brown vetoed the bill that had passed the legislature that would have allowed these things just on any old pole by right. The situation now, I believe, is such that the FCC has taken this authority, this preemption from local government, from state government, and now the FCC would allow cell towers in various configurations on any old pole by right. Can you clarify when that kicked in, if that's truly the case or not?
Yes, Heather Mender, your city attorney, I'm going to have my associate who works on small cell issues, Marlene DeLinger, answer that question, and she's on.
We have one minute left for this meeting.
Thank you.
So the FCC's order, well, under state law, wireless facilities are allowed in the right-of-way, and the FCC's order expands on that by allowing small cells to be placed on public facilities in the right-of-way, including streetlights.
So right now, maybe the, I could characterize what we've done as sort of a brokered piece with the carriers, we have five contracts in place, we are, we are getting these done under that regime, but it, things could go differently for us, I guess, if we were, if we didn't have a program, the carriers might resort to more of a helter-skelter scenario. Is that fair to say? And they'd be allowed to do so under the FCC's preemption?
I would say that the city has put in place regulations, requirements, that the carriers are required to comply with when they submit their applications. So the city's requirements do give the city more control over aesthetic repli, the aesthetic features and regulation of these facilities.
Okay, thank you. So I still see Leon and John, we're over, but you can each have two minutes, go. Go John first, since Leon's already spoken.
Yeah, so I'll try to be short. You know, what we're, the whole reason that we're here is because of the residents. And residents do have concerns, and we have a duty to address those concerns. In my view, the city does not have a current policy, and the residents deserve a policy that they can look at that tells them how close cells can be to residential structures, how close cells can be to schools, how close cells can be to the playyards of houses. Chad clearly said earlier, there is no 20 foot or any foot requirement in Cupertino. And to me, that is a true problem that we have, that we need a policy to let the residents know. What is the right number for each of those? Okay, let us work that out, let city staff come back and tell us. Should it be 50 feet, 100 feet, or 300 feet? The December article from Palo Alto said that they increased the, or had on their council agenda to increase the distance to schools from 300 feet to 600 feet. We need, in my view, what I'm asking this council to do is to have staff go off and create a policy that puts all the details on a piece of paper that the residents can look at and understand how, how these things are currently going to affect them. When they get a notification of a cell that's going to be next to their house, like the resident that was there, what does he have to understand what his, his rights are? Now, true, the policy might go beyond what has been perceived, as until it's settled in court, perceived FCC authority. So if, if we were to say 100 feet from residences, I'm sure that there would be some business out there that would be saying, no, you can't do that because of the FCC. Well, until it's truly been decided, one way or the other, I think we need to be on the side of the residents and addressing their concerns. I also heard that one of the senators is proposing a bill of some type to also address this. A California senator, I believe, I don't have her name handy. But again, I'm requesting that this city council have staff create a city policy so that the city staff or public works, when they are out notifying a resident that there's a proposed plan, that he has a policy, and he's also telling the cellphone provider, this is what our policy is, we would like you very much not to go beyond 200 feet or 100 feet closer to that house, and hope that they will comply. I will say this, there's a correlation. Cameras are a huge deterrent. How many cameras are truly used to showcase the crime that was prevented? But by having a camera, you are a deterrent. Now, our policy that says please stay 100 or 200 feet away from houses is a good application for the proposed cell providers to say, oh, if we go within that, we're going to have, you know, more of a issue to resolve with the community, let's stay outside of that. Without that policy, they have no reason to not say, just like the resident today, there's going to be a cell right out 4 feet from my property line. So again, I'm asking the city council to ask the city manager and staff to come back with a policy that then we can adjust if need be, so that the residents truly know what the city's policy is. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. And finally, Leon, we're five minutes over, so please be brief.
Okay, hi, sorry. I spoke earlier, but as, I was asking clarifying questions like the mayor did many times more. So now is my only chance to express my opinion on this subject. Unfortunately, so late. I echo John's request that we need to bring back this for an ordinance. I think the ordinance should include foremost permit fees. Unfortunately, we are not charging any permit fees in order to recover staff time on all these issues, I'm pretty surprised. And then the, we should cover that there should be only one antenna on each small cell. This is sent out for San Francisco, Palo Alto, and the Los Altos. And also, any modification should require another permit, which is required as Los Altos too. And any replacement or alteration, the city should be notified. And I hope to increase the notification radius to 600 feet. And I think also we need to specify the spacing between small cells and the spacing from macro cells, because the radiation exposure does add up. And I think we should consider the way Palo Alto does, they did not forbid any sites, they just specified for certain sites, they need to apply for exceptions so that it, this comes through the council. So it provides a different level of transparency for certain sites, that discourage certain undesirable sites. And so that applicants would choose a site that's more preferable for us. And I could clarify the way the Palo Alto city council member, actually, they have not been challenged. I don't know why some people think so. And also, I think Los Altos requires the applicant to submit their master plan. I asked this, we are, I were told by staff, the applicants are unwilling to share their master plan, which means all the sites they are considering for small cell. But we can require them to submit to us. And of course, minimum maximum elevation. And Los Altos also provide a list of preference in locations. For example, we would prefer it to be next to commercial sites, and let's prefer it to school, and let's prefer it to residential site, a list of preferences. We are not saying we don't allow it, but then for people, applicants who choose sites that are at the higher list of the list, will be more likely to have an easier process. So that helps with applicants. And also, I'd like to propose that we establish a registry to allow residents who are really concerned, this is, comes down to personal choice. One can choose not to use cellphone, one can choose to put their cellphone away from their body when they are in the house, when they are in their office. But one cannot turn off cellphone, so small cell towers that's next to their house and below, and they're 24/7 for 10 years or more to come. I think no one has actually studied the impact of that kind of exposure. FCC, they at most will tell you it's inconclusive. I don't think anyone, any credible agency is there to say it's safe. Most everyone could say is, we don't know. There is not conclusive evidence one way or the other. There are hundreds of scientists who have filed appeals to say they are concerned. But then again, how, other hundreds experiments are funded by telecommunications nonprofits to say, to make that inconclusive, we really don't know. So I think as cities, we just need to do our best to provide transparency so that we have the most control under the legal right. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you, and I agree, I think, I was, I'm surprised that we don't have any minimum or minimum distance.
I'm surprised, I and John have to push and push to get this even on the agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you. So.
Mr. Mayor, you haven't heard from the vice mayor, if you have any questions or comments?
Oh, I don't see his hand raised, so that's why. Darcy?
You know, in the interest of time, I wasn't going to ask my question, but I appreciate the half-minute to do so. You don't need to provide an answer. My question was this, how long after a permit is issued, does a permit holder have to build a structure? And I'll make this a segue into, I think, some of the comments that are a bit similar to what other council members are saying. I would just like to make a request, and this is just one of those things in a general positioning perspective. When we're providing information to the city and to council, can we please let the residents know what their and the city's rights and discretion are from the outset, as opposed to what the city and residents must do and cannot do? So I think that would make for, generally speaking, a better type of presentation, and would probably engender a little bit more, you know, trust from the, from the public. With regard to where our discretion is, I realize that you can't cover everything, but at least it would be good to get some sense of where our local ability to, to regulate these types of structures are. So that's it, thanks very much.
Okay, okay, thank you. And echoing the concerns of Leon and John, yeah, I would favor looking into something similar to what the other cities have done, to not have any number of feet that it has to be away from the property, I think that's a little too loose there. So hope, so Madam City Manager, if you can get this on the work plan as soon as possible, I think that's something we should look into. And with that.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
What other cities are we looking at? Our policies and procedures are fairly consistent with the vast majority of the cities in the surrounding neighborhoods.
Right, except we do not have any, you know, you could put it zero feet from the property line, right? Because we don't have any, anything like the other cities that say, oh, it's got to be 20 feet or 50 feet or 60 feet from anything.
The only cities that have distance restrictions are Palo Alto, Los Altos, and Los Gatos that I'm aware of.
Right, well, I'm sure throughout California, there's other, other cities as well. And the other thing that Councilmember Chow mentioned that there's no fees, I thought we do charge fees to the carriers.
We do charge fees, we have a permit fee when they supply for, when they apply for the permits, and then we have an ongoing lease rates.
Right. Okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's what I didn't, was confused about.
That's good to know.
Okay.
One more thing, that Palo Alto ordinance also required the applicant to, allow the city to hire a consultant or expert at the cost of the applicant to review the application or verify any potential concerns.
All right, thank you. So we're 15 minutes over the special meeting, so let's adjourn the special meeting, and then let's reconvene at 7:05 for the regular meeting. Thank you.
Are we hanging up from this Zoom and doing a second Zoom?
I don't think so, because it wasn't a closed session, is that true, our video department?
Well, we, we got another invitation, so I would suggest that perhaps we do have to sign on to a, a separate session.
Oh, okay. So sign back on at. 7:05, thank you.